Can I have your attention, we'll get started? Can I have your attention, please? Thank you. As always, I'd like to start off, if you would, join me in a prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many gifts that you have bestowed upon us, especially the gift of free will. It is our pledge that we shall never submit to those who seek to control us. We will not yield to globalists, we will not yield to statists, and we will not yield to terrorists. We will fight for our freedom, not out of anger, not out of revenge, but out of love for ourselves and our neighbors. Father, fill us with your Spirit, fill us with your forgiveness, fill us with your compassion, so that we might honor your will today and forever. Amen. And if you'll join me in a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Thank you, the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. If you're trying to get through this quickly, there are agendas on the table. A few announcements. First off, cell phones. Please silence them. Fifty-fifty. We're not having a fifty-fifty tonight. That's a quick announcement. We do have a gold raffle, we started that last week. Half ounce of gold, American Eagle coin. And we sell 100 tickets, draw a winner. We're probably halfway through, so it's not likely that we pull a winner tonight, but it is possible. You don't need to be present in order to win. By the way, we drew a gun last week. And John, you were actually the winner, did somebody tell you that? Okay. Tonight, you can get in this next gun game, St. Guns. That's a Smith &amp; Wesson Performance Center, ported barrel M&amp;P Shield, or the Ruger, or $400 in cash in case your spouse says you have enough guns. Again, $10 a ticket, we sell 100 tickets, and draw a winner. Chips, if you're not familiar with the concept of chips, we sell chips, that is, if you're short on cash, you have a credit card, please go see Brian in the back, you can buy $10 chips, and then you can spend them anywhere, you can buy raffle tickets, you can put them in the donation buckets, and they will also be good for David's books. So if, for example, you came, you wanted two books, but realized you only have enough money for one, you can go back, get chips from Brian, and give them to David to pay for your book. The key, though, is, chips are only good for tonight, as I normally say. If we didn't do that, we would have people duplicating them for every meeting, and we would be out some money. Oh, someone's ringing the bell. Okay, let's see if we can make this work. I think everybody knows we've got Rick Saccone here tonight, we've got David Rubin here tonight. I was not planning on providing an introduction, actually, for either gentleman, both can tell you about themselves far better than I can, but I do want to make a point that we were at Bob Casey's office, this afternoon, a bunch of us, were demonstrating out in front of his office, and we had these signs. "Bob Casey, All Talk, No Action." "Recognize Jerusalem, Cosign S-11." So S-11, for those who don't know, is a current US Senate bill that says we will recognize Jerusalem as the capital of Israel, and that we will move our embassy from Tel Aviv to Israel, I'm sorry, to Jerusalem. I've had a few people say to me, "Well, you know, you guys really don't need to take that project on, because Trump just has to not sign the waiver." The waiver, the waiver is something that was signed in 1995, and I believe it was called the Jerusalem Act, or something similar like that, or similar to that. And it does just this. But every president has signed a waiver every six months since 1995, so that we didn't have to actually do that. Well, Trump says that he will not sign the waiver, which will then clear the way to move our embassy and so on, but he alone, he shouldn't be alone. You know, we really need Congress to get on board with this, and the way for them to show their support is by cosigning this bill and voting for it. So, as a Tea Party, that's what we're doing, we're attempting to put some pressure on Bob Casey to do just that. He says that he supports our good friend Israel, we would like to see him get on board and sign this. That takes us to Rep. Rick Saccone. Why have we asked him here tonight? Because this is an important issue to us. Bob Casey is someone who we are trying to affect, and guess what? Rep. Saccone is running for Bob Casey's seat. And we would really like for you to meet Rick tonight, get to know him, get to know what he stands for, and I think you'll come to the same conclusion that I had, and that is, we've got a very solid conservative here, who would be an excellent, excellent senator. So with that, I'm gonna bring Rick up in just about 30 seconds. I need to jump down there and adjust some volume. Wow, thank you, thank you, I appreciate that. I like that, it gives me excitement here, man, it got me going early. It's really good to be here in the Lehigh Valley in Valentine. Most of you have met my wife, Yom, and we're happy to be here and meet with you tonight, thank you for inviting me. Hey, how many of you are still excited about our President Donald Trump? Come on, give it up for him! Yeah, we're still excited about that, and I wake up every morning smiling because Donald Trump is President, but you know, the work is not done. You see how he's getting beat up in Washington DC, we still got a lot of things to do. And we still have a number of good conservative judges that we've got to elect here, coming up in this election. We've got to make sure that happens. Next year, we're gonna elect a new governor, and we're gonna elect a new US Senator. Hopefully, that will be me, that's why I'm here, right? So I'm gonna tell you a little bit about myself. As some of you know, as Tom mentioned, I'm fourth, this is my fourth term in the State House. I came in with Justin Simmons, many of you know him here locally, as your local State Rep. I'm a retired military officer. I worked in counterintelligence and counterespionage. I come from a family of veterans. My grandfather was in World War I, my father's a D-Day veteran in World War II. I served a full career in the United States Air Force. Both my sons are now serving, one of them is right now in Korea, and that might spot, we can talk a little bit about that later. I've interrogated spies from North Korea and terrorists in Iraq. I served in Baghdad and Mosul. I'm an author of nine books, two of them are on North Korea. I'm still a professor at St. Vincent College in Latrobe, Pennsylvania. I teach international relations, I have since 1999. I've been an international diplomat. I actually worked inside North Korea for a year, I was the only American living in North Korea, working on the nuclear power plant project, I wrote two books about that when I came back. I had many Fulbright scholarships to Egypt and Africa. Traveled to Israel several times, and I enjoyed a fellowship there in Israel under the Foundation for the Defense of Democracy. I've been an international businessman. We've traveled to 75 countries. I was a news anchor on a South Korean English-language news station for a while. Been a church youth leader. I've been a husband to my wife, Yom, many of you have met for 38 years. We have two sons, as I mentioned, and now, my greatest joy is we have two grandchildren. We have two grandchildren, that's our greatest joy. I've dealt with foreign ambassadors and heads of agencies. I have a strong conservative record here at home, and I'm the only candidate that has actually cut taxes. So that's a little bit about me. Now, I wanna switch quickly to what's going on, what's the agenda? You know, last November, you voted in an agenda, a new agenda. It's not President Trump's agenda, as I always say, it's our agenda. President Trump tapped into that agenda. He's down there trying to enforce that agenda, and he's getting beat up about it. What is that agenda? Simply, it's to cut taxes, to reduce government spending, simplify that tax code. Reduce government regulation that paralyzes business and innovation. Repeal and replace Obamacare, you got the first installment of that the other day. Appoint conservative justices to the Supreme Court, that will not make law, but will apply the law, so we can get rid of this judicial activism. Rebuild our military, which I was a part of, and allow them to go anywhere in the world and fight and win without these rules of engagement that tie their hands behind their backs. And I know there are many veterans in this room, you know what that means. To take care of our veterans who've come back, and some of them dying in line, waiting to get an appointment in our VA, that scandalous system that we have. To secure our border and defund sanctuary cities. To protect American citizens and stop releasing violent illegal aliens back into our street. To fight terrorism, which I did in the Middle East, and to vanquish ISIS. To achieve energy independence and to support law enforcement. How much of our law enforcement is getting beat up in the media and in our culture today? And support our loyal allies like Israel. Protect and enhance our Second Amendment, I know there's a lot of pro-Second Amendment people in this room. I ran on instituting the Castle Doctrine in Pennsylvania, and we passed that in 2010. Before that, you know, we had the duty to retreat. And now we have the Castle Doctrine, I'm proud of that. And finally, to protect our unborn children. How many of you are pro-life in this town? We're not ashamed to be pro-life in Pennsylvania, we're still a pro-life state. Guess what? Our Senator Bob Casey, he's definitely in Washington DC, and he's voting against almost everything on that agenda that I just laid out for you. Almost every one of those things. As most of us predicted, he voted against President Trump's pick for the Supreme Court, Neil Gorsuch. He voted against David Friedman for our Ambassador to Israel, great man, perfect guy for the job. He will oppose moving our embassy to Jerusalem. And you know what, he wouldn't even declare the Muslim Brotherhood a terrorist organization. I mean, and Bob Casey, you know, he has his foot on both sides of every issue. That's why we have to move him out of there. And I say never again should our strongest allies, like Israel, worry whether the US will support them. We have to support our allies in the war, that's leadership. And we need leaders who'll no longer stand silent for the anti-Israel bias in the United Nations. You see what goes on there all the time, the Israel bashing that we have. But we have to push back and defend our friends. Now, all that's going on, but remember, that's just one part of it. In addition to Bob Casey up there voting against everything President Trump's doing, we have an out-of-control federal bureaucracy right now that is undermining and sabotaging our President. Some call it, you've heard the culture call it "deep state interference." You know, we've actually had, in our bureaucracy, the Director of National Intelligence stand in front of Congress and lie to them about the surveillance on American citizens. And I'm gonna tell you, I was part of the intelligence community for many years. When the intelligence operations become political weapons, it endangers our very democracy, we have to stop that. The bureaucracy has become so unresponsive to elective authority, they don't even pay any attention to us. It's like that Harrisburg, too, folks. It's become too big and too defiant. And it's part of a large array of left-wing groups that are determined to resist and undermine our President. And I just wanna tell you, I call them the Big Six, I just wanna run through it real quick. You'll recognize them right away when I tell you about them. First of all, is the media. The media is out there filtering and mischaracterizing our conservative message. That same media is attacking our new agenda, that agenda that I just laid out for you. The second one are these action groups, or issue advocacy groups, like MoveOn.org, or Resist, that's the newest one. They're out there inciting violence, these environmentalist groups and immigration groups. The third one, think of this, the entertainment industry. The entire entertainment industry is poised against us and against our President. Hollywood, all of the music industry, with the music they're putting out. Comedy, every night, trashing our President. Fourth, which I'm a part of now, academia. It's fomenting demonstrations on college campuses. Silencing free speech they disagree with. You know, the Left actually believes now, I see it not on the campus, I'm at so much, but on other campuses around our state, they actually believe that speech they disagree with should be met with violence. When have you ever heard that in our culture, when have you ever heard that in our society? And maybe you saw on the news, at Duquesne University in Pittsburgh where I'm from, they were protesting a Chick-fil-A coming on the campus because it might violate someone's safe space, if you can believe that, right? I mean, it's unbelievable, I mean, just think about it, I'm a bit of a historian, I thought, you know, once our youth cried, they boldly cried, "Give me liberty or give me death", and they tried to change a nation. Today, our youth just cry in their safe places, on our college campuses. That's what we're teaching our kids, we've gotta change that. Number five is the bureaucracy, as I mentioned, and number six are the Democrats in the United States Senate, voting against and blocking everything they can. The President is trying to drain the swamp, as he said, and I wanna help him, that's why I'm here tonight. We need leaders who'll protect Pennsylvanians. We need leaders who'll stand up for you. I wanna be that champion in Washington DC. Now, I want you to know, many in the establishment, they still think that they pick who governs over us. And they're working right now very hard to find a candidate to run against me that they'll pick and they'll throw a lot of money at him, because they don't want me up there. They want someone they control, someone that's more liberal, and that's who they're gonna push. You know, they'll try to, they'll cut deals, and they'll cut them at your expense. If you watch it, it's coming, it's out there right now, they're working on it. But we know that it's the people who pick who governs over us. We just proved that with the Trump election. It's really up to you all, we can't let them do that. It's you getting out and voting, it's you getting out and talking to your neighbors and your friends. You're the force multiplier, we can turn against that establishment and we can still win. You've been disappointed all your life by letting the establishment choose your candidates for you, you know that, you've complained about it, election after election after election. So, I'm a conservative, I'm standing before you, you chose President Trump, I'm asking you to choose me. You know, I'll tell you, folks, I'll end with this. We are in a fight for the character of our nation. It's spiraling downward right now. And you have to decide whether you're gonna let others determine the fate of our nation, or whether you're gonna determine that fate. Washington DC can be a dark place. We need strong leaders who'll take the light to that dark place where Bob Casey's sitting right now. I will be that leader, I will never let you down, that's my promise, but I need your help. Are you gonna help me out here in the Lehigh Valley? That's all I need to hear, God bless you, thank you, happy back again. Thank you, Rick. So, before I bring David up, I would just like to say, you know, in my view, this is a critically important issue for us. You know, Israel is, of course, the only democracy in the Middle East. We must stand strong, we must stand united, we must stand with our friends. Speaking of friends, David Rubin spent some time with us, it's probably three years ago now, and he has become a very good friend of this Tea Party. And when he called to say that he was gonna be back here in the States at this time, I said, "Look, our normal monthly meeting is, I guess, May 4th, we had Pam Deller, but you know what, we will call a special meeting for you, because this Tea Party just absolutely loves this man." And I would now like to bring up David Rubin, please join me.
Thank you. Yes, it's good to be back here in the Lehigh Valley. And I have to tell you, those of you, how many of you were here the last time I was here? Okay, about half, maybe? So, that was right at the, I think it was right at the beginning of the election campaign, there were about 17 candidates at that time, for the Republicans alone. Of course, on the Democratic side, there was just Hillary. But, yeah, a lot has happened since then, thank God. And we in Israel, we in Israel really couldn't be happier. You know, I'm very pleased with the results, and as it was building up to the election, there was a lot of talk about, well, in the media, whenever I would get interviewed, they'd be asking me, and, you know, particularly this one show, there's like, there's a radio show, and there's also this television show, where I get asked this question a lot. And so one of the radio shows is Bobby Gunther Walsh. But one of the television shows is one that I'm gonna be on tomorrow, God willing, which is Stuart Varney on Fox News Network. And he always, you know, he'll give me my topics, and then, and then he says, so then I get into the studio, I sit down next to him, it's commercial break, and he says to me, "Well, what do you think about what the Jewish community, you know, how can we get the Jewish community to support Trump in America?" And I said, "You're gonna ask me about that again?" And he's always asked me that question, because it is a problematic question. So, by way of explanation, I'm gonna give you a little explanation about that, and it's important to understand, I mean, how many people here are actually Jewish? One. That says it all. Okay, two. So, the American Jewish community is a little bit different than the Israelis. And, but I'm gonna get to that a bit afterwards. Now, the, we recently had a press conference in Washington between President, with President Trump and Mahmoud Abbas. And Mahmoud Abbas is the head of, the President of the Palestinian Authority. All right, I'm not gonna get into a discussion about it right now. Perhaps if you have a question after, if we have Q and A, you could ask a question, but, but he is the, he's officially, they call him President, he's the head of the Palestinian Authority, Chairman of the Palestinian Authority, okay, are we okay with that? Okay, so, but actually, if you trace back his history a little bit, not only is he the head of the Palestinian Authority, he is also the Chairman of the Palestine Liberation Organization, he is also the head of Fatah, which is the terrorist organization that he heads, which, I must point out, has committed more terrorist attacks than any of the terrorist organizations in the world, and definitely more than Hamas and Islamic Jihad, which are the two other ones that are very active in Israel, and which get all the attention as terrorist groups. But they, Fatah has committed more terrorist attacks than both of them put together. So, I think it's important to point that out. I don't know if the President is aware of that, and I'm hoping that he's aware of that. But he didn't seem to be aware of that when the two of them were standing up there in this press conference. And hopefully, we can enlighten the President a little bit about that. I know his heart is in the right place, for sure, but hopefully, he'll come around on this. So, I'm gonna explain a few things that I would like all of you to understand. And I remember once, when I was on a radio show with Mike Huckabee, I asked him, "Is it okay to say 'God' on this radio show?" He said, "Oh, please, please." So, I think it's important to talk a little bit about God, and how Israel is connected to God, because our whole raison d'etre, all reason for being, is that we are connected to God. That God gave the Ten Commandments to Moses on Mount Sinai, and that is a heritage that we passed along to the entire world. And only a small part, only a part of the world actually appreciates that. The, but the entire Judeo-Christian civilization on which this country is based and was founded comes from that handing over the Ten Commandments on Mount Sinai to Moses. Now, Moses was an interesting guy. Because not only, not only did Moses, that's not me, is it? Not only did Moses give the Ten Commandments over to the people of Israel after coming down from Mount Sinai, but he actually taught, if you read the Five Books of Moses, the whole last book of the Five Books of Moses, is Moses teaching the Torah, teaching the biblical heritage to the people of Israel. But one thing you may not know about Moses is that he had a serious stuttering problem. And if he was talking to people, very often, they had a hard time understanding him. So there's a biblical commentator that asked the question, "Well, how is it possible that Moses, when he was teaching the biblical heritage to the entire people of Israel, how is it possible that they understood him?" Well, that biblical commentator answers, "When Moses was speaking Torah, he was completely understood. He didn't stutter." Now, some of you may know that I'm originally from a place called Brooklyn, that you may have heard of. Right, New York City, hardcore New York City. And in New York City, there is a certain natural skepticism of anything that may seem supernatural, of anything that may seem godly. I'm sorry to say. That's what I grew up with. So I still have a little bit of skepticism, perhaps. And so, I was immediately skeptical when I heard this story. How is it possible that he stuttered all the time when he spoke to people individually? But when he was speaking to the people of Israel, he was speaking Torah, no stuttering. Well, I soon learned the answer. I soon learned a concrete demonstration, God put something in my hands that was concrete, God put something in my hands that was concrete, that simpletons like me can understand. So, my son had his bar mitzvah last year. Okay, he reads thirteen years old, the entry into spiritual manhood in the Jewish faith. And when a kid in Israel, or at least in Shiloh, Shiloh, where I live, in the biblical heartland of Israel, the so-called West Bank. Right? How many of you have heard about the West Bank, by the way? How many of you have read about it in your Bibles? Put your hands down, please, you have not read about it in your Bibles. It is not written even once in the Bible. Okay, the actual names are Judea, which is the region south of Jerusalem, Samaria, which is the region north of Jerusalem. Those are the accurate names for the so-called West Bank. Well, that's where we live, in the heart of Samaria, in Shiloh. Yes, I know there are sixty-five cities or towns in the United States called Shiloh, and there are churches called Shiloh, and parks called Shiloh, and hotel chains called Shiloh, and civil war battles called Shiloh, and a child of a couple of misguided movie stars called Shiloh. But we're in the original, we are the original Shiloh. In Hebrew, we call it Shiloh, so from here on in, I'm gonna call it Shiloh with you guys. So, in Shiloh, where the boy has bar mitzvah, he reads from the Torah on the Sabbath. And we actually don't just read from the Torah, we sing from the Torah. There's a special melody that you have to learn, special, which is very, very hard to learn, for each letter, there is a certain sound. And so, every boy who learns for his bar mitzvah, he has to read for about a half an hour in the synagogue, he has to sing the words of the Torah in the synagogue. Not an easy task, so we get a teacher for him. So I was looking around to see who I could get to teach him. And I, I decided that I wanted to ask the fellow who, is an adult, and he reads in the synagogue very often on the Sabbath, and he reads perfectly. He enunciates every single word so beautifully. I said, "That is who is going to teach him." And so we started the lessons. And I asked my son, after the first lesson, I asked, "How's it going? How did it seem?" And he said, "It's going great." He reads so beautifully, he explains everything so clearly to me. But there is a problem, so I said, "What do you mean? He reads so perfectly, and he explains everything so beautifully, what is the problem?" He said, "Well, we have to discuss when we're gonna have the next lesson. I can hardly understand him." This gentleman has a serious stuttering problem, which I knew about beforehand, and I hoped everything would work out. And thank God, it worked out beautifully. He learned for six months with this guy, and he read beautifully his bar mitzvah. So, what is my point? The point is that in Israel, Torah is central. It doesn't mean that everyone in Israel considers the Torah, the Bible, to be central in their lives. We have a lot of secularists who started the country in nineteen forty-eight. Most of them were secular. But there was someone up there who was pulling the strings. And they were tools in the hands of the Almighty in the creation of the state of Israel, in the recreation, the re-establishment of the state of Israel in our times as a sovereign nation. So, in the Book of Ezekiel, it speaks about that. And it says, it says in the Book of Ezekiel, chapter thirty-six, that it says, "I am bringing you back into your land after scattering you around the world." It says that, it says that for two thousand years ago, the Israelites would be exiled from the land of Israel because of our bad deeds, because of idolatry. Then it says that God will bring us back into the land after he scatters us amongst the nations. Why does he bring us back into the land? He says, "Not for your sake do I do this, oh house of Israel, but for my holy name, which you have desecrated from being amongst the nations." The very fact of Israel being scattered amongst the nations and persecuted throughout the world, that is considered a desecration of God's name. God considers it a desecration of his name. But the converse is also true, because he says, "I will bring you from the four corners of the earth, and I will bring you back into your land, and then the nations of the world will know that I am God, the God of Israel." So, the return of Israel to its land is a spiritual thing. It's not, it's not just a political act. And there are some people, there are some secular Jews in Israel who say, who say, "We can't make this into a religious war, this conflict with the Muslim world. We can't make it into a religious war." But what do they think that it is, if not a religious war? What do the Muslims think it is? The Muslims believe in Jihad. Jihad is central in Islam. And I hear these people who I really like sometimes on television or radio news. I'll see Fox News, for example. And take someone, for example, like Sean Hannity. Okay, or take a politician like Ted Cruz. Okay, good people. But whenever they talk about Islam, they feel that they have to say three words together. Right? It's like this, they're kind of tied together with a piece of string. Radical Islamic terrorism. We have to defeat radical Islamic terrorism. Okay, but maybe the problem isn't just radical Islamic terrorism. The problem is a philosophy of Jihad, which is central in Islam. By the way, Jihad, for those of you who don't know, means holy war against all non-Muslims. Oh yes, there are some Muslim spokesmen who you'll see occasionally on the evening news. And they'll say, "Well, Jihad doesn't really mean holy war. It means self-reflection of the Muslim." Right, like, kind of like indigestion, internal self-reflection. No, it means holy war against all non-Muslims. It doesn't always mean holy war with shooting or with rocks. But it means aggressive war to take over Judeo-Christian civilization and to destroy America as a Judeo-Christian civilization, and to destroy Israel completely. That's what it means. So when we say, when we bend over backwards to say it's radical Islamic terrorism, or when we, or when we use a term like Islamism, which the Muslims don't use, because we're afraid to say that the core of Islam is radical, then we're not being honest, or we're being ignorant. And better not to be ignorant, and better always to be honest. So, we have a situation here today where, where we have the president talking about how he wants to make the big deal. I was going to the Middle East. He's going on, by the way, on the twenty-second of May, he's gonna be in Israel. How many of you know what the twenty-third of May is? The twenty-third of May is Jerusalem Day, when we commemorate the reunification of Jerusalem in nineteen sixty-seven, in the Six-Day War. And Six-Day War was actually in June of nineteen sixty-seven, but we base it on the Hebrew calendar, it's a little bit different. So he's coming on the eve of Jerusalem Day, when we commemorate the reunification of Jerusalem as Israel's eternal capital. Now, I'm an optimist, I'm also a realist. But I find it hard to believe that he would plan to come to Israel on the eve of Jerusalem Day without coming with the intent of declaring Jerusalem, recognizing Jerusalem finally as Israel's capital. I don't think that, that he would do that without that intent. Hopefully, he's getting good advice, and hopefully, that's what he's going to do. And to declare his intent of moving the embassy finally to Jerusalem from Tel Aviv, where it has been since the establishment of the state. Now, his ambassador, I know, the American ambassador to Israel, David Friedman, believes very strongly in moving the embassy to Jerusalem. He also believes very strongly that the entire land of Israel is, should be part of sovereign Israel, including Judea, including Samaria. I didn't exactly say that in the hearings in Congress, but I guess that was the only way they could get himself approved. But, but that's the, that's the reality. So, Israel is being, unfortunately though, faced with a peace process which has precedent. And we've basically been banging our land for peace heads against the wall for about forty years now. Every single time they talk peace process, they're talking about a Palestinian state in Judea and Samaria, the biblical heartland of Israel. And we assume that it's going to work. So they have these grand peace conferences, like the one that they call the Oslo Peace Process Conference that they had in Washington DC at the White House, and on the lawn of the White House. In nineteen ninety-two, it was a grand ceremony. Yitzhak Rabin, the Prime Minister of Israel, was there. Please don't get it confused with David Rubin, that's me. The chairman at that time of the Palestinian Liberation Organization, Yasser Arafat. Right? He was the predecessor of Mahmoud Abbas. And of course, President Bill Clinton. Remember him, Hillary's husband? Yeah, so he was, he was there like a proud grandfather. And, well, they agreed that from here on in, all differences between Israel and the so-called Palestinians will be worked out peacefully. The very next day, Yasser Arafat boarded a flight to South Africa, where he was scheduled to speak in a mosque. And he went into that mosque, and he gave his usual fiery Yasser Arafat speech, and he said, "With blood and fire, we will liberate the U of Jerusalem. And I call on all my Muslim brothers and sisters to stand with me as we liberate Jerusalem. Jihad, Jihad, Jihad." Well, the very next day, he flies to New York, where he was scheduled, I believe, to speak at the United Nations as an honored guest. Well, that says a lot about the United Nations. He was scheduled to speak there as an honored guest, and word had already gotten out, remember this, nineteen ninety-two, before the age of email. I don't know what Hillary would have done in that age, but, but it was before the age of email, but word was getting out anyhow. And so the word got out about that speech, and there were reporters waiting at the terminal at JFK. And so Yasser Arafat comes out of the terminal, one of the reporters shouts to him, "Mr. Arafat, you just signed the Oslo Peace Accords. You just promised that you're gonna work out everything peacefully with Israel. How could you be calling for Jihad at that speech in that mosque?" He looked at them with an expression that I will never forget. And he said the following words, "I will continue my Jihad for peace." You cannot have a Jihad for peace. It is an oxymoron, a contradiction in terms. But Yasser Arafat was not a moron, just as Mahmoud Abbas is not a moron, just as, as Wukkani in Iran is not a moron. They knew exactly what they're doing when they try to work these peace deals out and get naive people in the West to do it with them. I remember there was once someone who, a political commentator, who said, you know, "People in the West always say, 'Why can't we just sit down with them like good Christians and work it out?'" He said, "The problem is, they're not Christians. And they're definitely not Jews. Okay, they operate from a different standard, from a standard that says if somebody doesn't agree with you, cut off their heads, or subjugate them and make them second-class citizens." Right? Some of you may have heard this last, you know, a couple of weeks ago from Pam Deller, I don't know. But, but this is the problem, it's a clash of civilizations. It's not pleasant to think about a clash of civilizations, but that's the reality. And that's been the reality of the peace process. And now we're faced with this. And President Trump, hopefully, will understand that you cannot have a peace process that is based on fictions. What are those fictions? Well, first of all, it's a fiction that you can divide the land of Israel and expect peace. That's number one. The entire land of Israel has to be understood in biblical guidelines. And those biblical guidelines tell us that Israel cannot give up one inch of the land of Israel, certainly the areas in our possession, from the Mediterranean Sea all the way to the Jordan River. Unfortunately, we have a situation today where, in Judea and Samaria, in particular, we haven't yet declared our sovereignty. Because the Prime Minister of Israel, as bold and strong as he seems when he comes to the United States to speak, and when John Boehner invited him to speak to Congress, and, you know, unfortunately, a good portion of the Democrats in Congress weren't even there. They boycotted. When he speaks at the UN, Prime Minister Netanyahu is very strong. But the fact is, in Israel, everyone knows that he succumbs to pressure. So the question is, where is the pressure gonna come from? So under Obama, in dealing with Obama, he was constantly under pressure. For eight full years, he was under pressure from a president who was created by the Islamic ideologues and the far secular left. Isn't that an interesting combination? And you can trace it, of course, back to his childhood. I'm not his psychiatrist, but you can trace it back to his childhood, where he was raised by a Muslim father, who he named his book, his first book after, and a communist mother. Okay, great combination. And his political career was launched by William Ayers. And his political career was launched by William Ayers, that unrepentant communist terrorist, and by Khalid Al Mansour, who was a Muslim businessman, who was a former advisor for the former prince of Saudi Arabia. So the influence was not good. And the Prime Minister of Israel very often was very nervous about what to do. So when it came to the peace process, the Prime Minister often agreed to freeze the growth of Jewish communities in Judea and Samaria. And often was afraid to fight against the Hamas and the other Islamic terrorist organizations in the way that you win wars. But the West kind of has forgotten how to win wars. You know, there's always this problem, "What about the civilians?" You know, if you find out that they're civilians of your enemy, you're afraid to bomb a place. Have we forgotten that World War II was won with the bombings of Berlin and Dresden? Of course. That's how wars are won. We win them, we fight them resolutely. You know, in Israel in 1967, we won a war in six days, and on the seventh day, we rested. Okay, then, we had a little other influence at that time. But you win a war by fighting, fighting passionately and going forward. Unfortunately, the politicians usually don't let the army go forward. Hopefully, that will change. So in Israel, we have this problem, this dual problem. I call it the Islamic tsunami. And it started in Israel, and it's spreading around the world. And what is it? It is the attempt to take over the world and turn it into an Islamic caliphate, which means Islamic rule. And it starts with the terrorism. But the terrorism, my view, is just a strategy. You can't defeat a people called terrorism. There is no people called terrorism. There is a people, the Muslim people, that advocate terrorism and that use terrorism as a tool, because terrorism has a religious justification. It's called jihad. In Judaism, we don't have that. We believe that the highest precept is "Love your neighbor as yourself." And there was also a Jew called Jesus, who lived in the land of Israel. And he also taught that the highest precept is "Love your neighbor as yourself." But we're being confronted with an ideology, and remember, it's an ideology, but it calls itself a religion. And it believes that jihad, holy war against all non-Muslims, is the highest precept. And that's why we have the terrorism. Now, if you come to my community, where I live, Shiloh, and you take a walk through my neighborhood with me, you will come across family after family after family. Virtually every family in my town either has had a family member killed or wounded in a terrorist attack, or an extended family member killed or wounded in a terrorist attack, or personally knows a neighbor or a friend or a teacher who's been killed or wounded in a terrorist attack. And because of that, the trauma is that deep. And people, there are periods of time, and we go through ups and downs, yes. But there are periods of time when people are afraid to go out in their cars on the roads to drive, to take that forty-five-minute drive to Jerusalem, because they're concerned that there's been shooting on the roads or that there's been rock throwing at cars on the roads from the Muslim communities. And by the way, I emphasize Muslim communities. And you know, people in Israel will say, "Well, our problem is with the Arabs." Well, yes, in a sense, our problem is with the Arabs, but primarily, our problem is with the Muslims, because that's the ideology that's looking to destroy us. And unfortunately, some of the other Muslims, some of the other Arabs that aren't Muslims have been influenced by the Muslims. But the real problem is the Muslim ideology. So fifteen years ago, I was coming back from Jerusalem. I had my three-year-old son buckled behind me in the baby seat, we're halfway home, coming up on the dark country road called the Road of the Patriarchs. Halfway home, the car is hit by a mass of Pala bullets from terrorists on the side of the road shooting with AK-47 assault rifles. The car went completely dead when the bullets hit. And I was shot in my left leg. Blood started flowing and spurting all over the place. I reached down to stop the blood flow with my hands, and I could just pick up two hands full of blood. The car was completely dead when the bullets hit, and I couldn't get it to start. Then I remembered, I had my three-year-old son sitting behind me. My son's name is Ruben, or Ruby, we'd call him. I said, "Ruby, are you okay?" His eyes were wide open, his mouth was wide open. I could see that he was breathing, but he looked like he was trying to scream or cry, but no sounds were coming out. He couldn't answer me. So I figured he was just in shock, and I would quickly try to start the car and get away from the terrorists. I turned the ignition, I tried over and over to charge it to start the car. Five, six, seven times, the car wasn't starting, was dead. Then suddenly, it started, as if it had never had a problem starting before. I hit the gas, and I drove a hundred ten miles an hour to get to the next community up the road, hoping I could get an ambulance there. I pull up to the front gate of the community, and every community in Samaria has a metal gate in the front to keep out the car bombers. So I shout out to the guard at the gate, "Ambulance, please get an ambulance." He didn't seem to hear me. But there was a young woman on the side of the road. She started jumping up and down, screaming, "Ambulance, ambulance, don't you hear?" At that point, everyone who was in the sound streets came running up to the car. A gas station attendant from across the street ran up to the car. He ripped off my shirt, he wrapped up my leg to stop the blood flow. He said, "I'm also a paramedic, don't worry, I know what I'm doing. Here, call your wife." He handed me his cellphone. I told my wife, "I've been shot in the leg. Hopefully, soon, an ambulance will be coming to take me to hospital." And Ruby is okay. Thirty seconds later, an ambulance zooms up, and two paramedics leap out of the ambulance. One of them comes running to the car, opens the back door, starts unbuckling my son out of the baby seat. And I said, "Please, no, he's just in shock, leave him alone. He needs to be with his Abba, he needs to be with his dad." He said, "I'm sorry, sir, I have to take him out." And he inspects him, and he cradles him in his arms, and he shouts to the ambulance, "He's also been shot, he's been shot in the head." A bullet had gone into his head where the skull meets with the neck, causing a skull fracture, we later found out, and internal bleeding in the cerebellum. Well, they quickly got to work on him, wrapped his head with bandages, put an oxygen mask on his face, attached it to a tank, an oxygen tank inside. The ambulance had brought me also into the ambulance on a stretcher and took us to the hospital on the other side of Jerusalem. When we got to the hospital, they put us in separate emergency rooms. They got to work on us. And after twenty minutes, the head surgeon came up to me, and he says, "David, David, I just want you to know that you are the one thousandth victim of terrorism to be hospitalized in this hospital in the past year and a half." And this fellow right next to me, who's the Public Relations Director, will protect your privacy, he'll keep the media away, because the media is amassed outside this emergency room. They want to come in and interview the one thousandth victim and photograph you and your son. And I wasn't quite sure why they would give me this dubious privilege. But he said, "Look, we have to protect your privacy. If you don't want to talk to the media, you don't have to. And of course, in about twenty minutes, we're going to have to operate on you. It'll be the first of probably several operations for you and for your son." Well, I thought for a moment, and I thought of all the frustration that I was feeling from all of the terrorism, all the terrorist attacks that we had experienced. I had a personal friend, whose body had been found mutilated in a cave about fifteen minutes north of Shiloh. And there were children who we knew personally, who had been killed in terrorist attacks, families that had been torn apart. I said, "You know what, you bring them in here, I have what to say to them." And I've been telling this story ever since. And I tell this story not because of our personal trauma, not because of any political message that I have to deliver, even though I obviously have my opinions that I'm not shy about. I tell this story because it's a story of miracles. I was shot in my left leg. Wait until you hear it, then you can clap again. I was shot in my left leg, even though terrorists were shooting from the right side and missed my right leg, so that I could drive my automatic car to get me to that ambulance. Secondly, the bullet that went into my son's head and through his neck missed his brain stem by one millimeter. Well, those are the kinds of miracles that, you know, are amazing, but your average atheist will try and rationalize in a way. But on my fifth day in the hospital, I'm laying in my hospital bed, I get a call from the car mechanic from Jerusalem, a nice fellow named Ayers. He says, "David, I just want you to know, we have the car. We've started ordering parts. There are forty-nine bullet holes in the car. It's not going to be easy to fix, but we're going to try, so don't worry." I said, "Don't worry, are you serious? My son is in the intensive care unit. He's sleeping twenty-two out of twenty-four hours of the day because of the bleeding in his brain. He can't lift himself up in his bed when he's awake. He doesn't remember his sisters who came to visit him in the hospital." I said, "I don't care about the car." He said, "I'm just calling you because I have to ask you a question. Why can't we start that car?" And I had goosebumps all over my body, because I know that the car went dead when the bullets hit. And I know I tried over and over to get it to start, it was dead. The terrorists are still shooting with their AK-47s. Suddenly, the car started as if on its own, and I got to that ambulance. Well, I have a personal confession to make, and I'm not even a Catholic. I've been a believer in the God of Israel for over thirty years, but up until that very moment, I still had some of that old New York City skepticism when it came to personal miracle stories. But I'm not a skeptic any longer, because we were just lifted up by God's wings to get us to that ambulance. I knew at that moment that God had planted a mission in me, and honestly, I had no idea what it was. But I discovered it several weeks later, when my son finally came home from the hospital. And he was walking again, "Thank God," and I was still worried about his memory. But that first night at home, he went walking, screaming in the middle of the night. And I hobbled over to him with my walker, and he screamed even louder. And my wife and I immediately realized that there is deep emotional psychological trauma in that boy that needs to be healed. You know, we in Israel, we have so many terrorist attacks, and most of the times, you don't hear about it in the news. Unless it's like a bus bombing in Tel Aviv, where a few people are killed, or a bus bombing in Jerusalem, or a rampage in one of the major cities. But when it happens in Judea and Samaria, the so-called West Bank, they don't even report it. In Israel, it's reported, but they don't report it here. Unless it's a really, really big one. So every time there's a terrorist attack in Israel, they report it in the news. And it's reported like a sports event. Twenty-three people killed, eighteen wounded. Five people killed, eleven people wounded. And then they interview the victims, and they say, "Okay, what happened?" "Well, I got shot here, and I got shot there. They're doing this operation on me, and then the doctors explain how they're going to do the operations." Psychological trauma is often neglected. And it's often because, very often, you don't realize about the trauma until some weeks or months later, sometimes even years later. I could give you many examples. One of my daughters is one example. But the psychological trauma is so painful for a parent to have to experience in a child, to see that pain in this little three-year-old who never heard of flight. About two and a half weeks later, I'm sitting at home in my living room. I was reading a book in the corner of the living room. My son was on the other side of the living room, sitting in a toy car about the size of this table. And he was in his pajamas, he still had a bandage on the back of his head, and I hear him speaking to himself. And I look over in his direction. And then he picks up a doll, and he looks at me, and he says, "This is the Abba, this is the dad. He has a hole in his leg." Then he picked up another doll, and he said, "This is the little baby, he was shot in the head." And my eyes filled with tears, because I just couldn't handle it emotionally, because I... I mean, basically, three reasons. The first is that this was the first time that he had said anything about the terrorist attack since it actually happened. Secondly, I realized right away, this is how you heal the trauma, this is how we'll heal his trauma, through some form of play therapy. Because child isn't like an adult who goes in and sits down with a therapist and kind of talks it out over time. Child needs play therapy of various kinds. The third thing I realized is that this was the mission that the Almighty had given me, which is to heal the trauma of all of the terror victim children in the biblical heartland of Israel, because there is just so much trauma there. And that's when I decided to start what would eventually become the Shiloh Israel Children's Fund, for the purpose of healing the trauma of the terror victim children and rebuilding the biblical heartland through those children. So that's what we're doing. And it's been thirteen years since I started the Shiloh Israel Children's Fund. We have a magnificent therapeutic educational campus with art therapy and music therapy and therapeutic prospect writing and animal assisted therapy in a couple of petting zoos that we've established. And well, we have a lot of success, thank God. So when I come to the States, I'm speaking about this, because it's not just something that I've done, and it's not just something that we, the Israelis, have done. This is something that people are helping to make happen by partnering with us around the world. And it's, you know, when Trump goes to Israel, one of the things that they're going to be talking about is the West Bank. And I understand he's also going to go to Ramallah and meet with Abbas. And he's going to be told that Israel is occupying the West Bank. And the question is going to be, well, is there going to be negotiation? Or is there not going to be negotiation? And what's going to happen to the Jewish communities in Judea and Samaria that are growing rapidly? My answer is that it is essential that the Jewish communities in Judea... My answer is that it is essential that the Jewish communities in Judea and Samaria continue to grow and grow at a much faster pace. And if we allow them to grow naturally, it's going to happen, because we have the highest birth rate in the world, we are the only part of the world of Western civilization that has a higher birth rate than the Muslims. And the Jewish birth rate is on the rise. It used to be, about twenty years ago, that was the opposite. The Jewish birth rate is on the rise, the Muslim birth rate is dropping. At this point, in Israel as a whole, the Jew birth rates are at a par at this point. The Jewish birth rate's going up, Muslim birth rate's going down. And it's important for the President of the United States and senators and representatives to give Israel the green light to go forward. I personally feel we don't need the green light, we should just do what we need to do. But unfortunately, not all politicians feel that way. So it's important for Israel to have that green, not green light, and we know that we have a friend in Washington that will allow Israel to develop and to grow to the point where we have so many Israelis living in Judea and Samaria that there won't be a need anymore to even talk about negotiation, because there'll be nothing to negotiate about. And if Mahmoud Abbas and his so-called Palestinians wanna have their independent state, well, maybe we can carve out a portion of Iraq for them, I don't know. But it won't be in the heartland of the land of Israel, that I can assure you. But there are things that we need to do to make sure that that happens. So I wanna, I invite all of you to stand with us in this mission, and I'm just gonna say, there are basically three ways to stand with Israel in these times. And by the way, when you stand with Israel, I don't know how many of you are biblically believe in the Bible or biblically literate, but it says very clearly in the Bible that those who bless Israel will be blessed, and that him who curses Israel will be cursed, and all of the nations will be blessed through Israel. Meaning that the blessings will come back to the United States of America in droves if America stands with Israel. Past Presidents George Washington, John Adams, John Quincy Adams, Abraham Lincoln, Harry Truman, they all understood this. And hopefully President Trump will come to that understanding as well, if he doesn't have it already. So I have a short film I'd like to show. It's a video about the Shiloh Israel Children's Fund and what we're doing. And if we have a few minutes, maybe I'll answer a few questions after the video.
David, can we take a fifteen-minute break, come back, play the video, and take questions at that point? Is that right?
If you feel that that works, maybe a ten-minute break.
Ten-minute break. Please, there are buckets on the table, donation buckets, if you need money and wanna use your credit card, go back and see Brian. Please, during the ten-minute break, see Rick and Young. We'll be back in ten minutes. We'll play the video, we will have question and answer, and then wrap. Thanks.
If I can have your attention, we'll start back in. May I have your attention? If I can have your attention, we'll start back in. We're gonna go right into a short video on Shilo Children's Fund. And, once that's completed, David will come back up, and we'll have some question and answer period, and then we'll wrap.
About a year after my term as mayor, I was coming home from Jerusalem with my three-year-old son sitting behind me in the baby seat. Halfway home, the car was hit by a mass of tail of bullets from Islamic terrorists on the side of the road. When the bullets hit, I was shot in the leg. Blood started coming out all over the place. My son looked like he was trying to scream or to cry, but no sounds were coming out. The car wasn't starting, he was completely dead, and the terrorists were still shooting. Finally, the car started, I zoomed ahead as fast as I could to get to the next community up the road, where I hoped I could get an ambulance. I had been shot in the leg. My son had been shot in the head. A bullet had gone into his head where the skull meets with the neck, causing a skull fracture. The bullet had missed his brain stem by one millimeter. We had weeks of treatment in the hospital, two operations. And what we discovered afterwards was that my son was badly in need of psychological post-trauma therapy. And that's when I decided to start Shilo Israel Children's Fund, because I understood the mission that God had intended for me was to heal the trauma of the terrorific children and to rebuild the biblical heartland of Israel through those children.
Shilo, the capital and spiritual center of ancient Israel. It was in Shilo where the Ark of the Covenant resided for almost 400 years.
It's an enormous, awesome privilege that I can be here and be involved and have a part in rebuilding the biblical heartland of Israel through children. I thank God every day for the privilege.
Through the movements Shilo's Fund, the quality of life for children has really grown over the years.
It's really very good for all the children here, for all the people of Shilo, not only Shilo, but also other places, other communities near Shilo.
For Shilo Israel Children's Fund, for all the families here.
The area of Samaria and Shilo in particular has suffered from a disproportionate amount of terrorist attacks. There is hardly a child in Shilo who has not had a parent or a sibling or a family member, neighbor or a friend or a teacher who've been killed or wounded in a terrorist attack. Everyone has been traumatized to varying degrees. And for that reason, I understood that there was a need to establish a therapeutic educational complex that would heal the trauma of children, and it would be the best place to serve the needs of the children for the entire Shilo township and all of Samaria.
למחוגש מגיעים ילדים מכל הסביבה, מאזור Shilo, אליב, אישובים הסביבה, ומגיעים גם מאזור השומון ואזור בכת הארדן. הנטרן שלי במחוגש תק טיפול שהוא קודם כל מאוד מקצועי, ודבר השני שהוא נגיש. הוא גם קרוב פיזית וגם נגיש מחינה כלכלית לאנשים שמגיעים.
The kids who come to us for therapy, they talk so much about really like how much they're scared of Arabs, what if Arabs comes to my window, what if... I get a rock thrown at me. A lot of them have a need to discuss it over and over again, to get it out of their system and maybe feel safe in a crazy situation.
במחוגש יש פה מתכלים שהם מכירים את האוכלוסייה, הם מגיעים מתוך האוכלוסייה, חכם חבו בעצמם מקרים של טרור או של טרומות שונות, ומתוך הידע הנקצועי שלהם, מתוך הניסיון האישי שלהם, הם יכולים להרו ולתת את הטיפול הכי מוטע למי שמגיע לפה.
Therapeutic prospect writing has been recognized around the world as being a very effective form of treatment for children. And therefore, we've incorporated that into our program.
When a child learns to ride a horse, and he does things that he never did, his self-confidence grows. You can see the children that comes here with a body like this, they come back with their back very straight. You can see through the body how they feel inside, the confidence grew.
Ever since Shilo was established 40 years ago, there has not been a high school here. 14-year-old boy has to go away to full-time dormitory school. He doesn't get to see his family for sometimes weeks at a time.
Many people recognize the need and the importance of this project, but government isn't supporting us yet. In order to get the project off the ground, we got the support of the Shilo Israel Children's Fund, and that's what really helped us get started, because otherwise, we wouldn't have been able to do anything.
This project is very important for me, because I lost my son, and now I have the opportunity to build a high school for children here in ancient Shilo. This gives us a lot of comfort for me and my family.
אנחנו פוצבת שבונים את השיבה תכונית ב"גוש יילום". אני נמצתי בפיגוע לפני שבע שנים. ניסו להוציא אותנו מכאן על ידי פיגויים בטרור. זה מאוד חשוב לנו להישאר כאן ושדור המשך של הילדים והתחנחו פה ושיהיה פה ההחזות חזקה באזור Shilo.
I think it's very important that there is a finally Shiva that's close to home and you don't have to go so far. I want to say thank you for all the people who donate money to the Shiva, that don't live in the country, helping us a lot here. Thank you very much.
בזכות כה Shilo ליעדי ישראל, באים לאלדישים את החלומות של בית הספר ולהציד את הילדים שנודים כאן. מה לברא?
יש לנו רוחלמה שתרחשו כדי לעצור, וכרן Shilo ליעדי ישראל מאפשר לנו, אם זה בהתחמה של הומנות שמאפשר לבנו לתת הציר התיעות שלה, את הקישורנות שלה. אם זה בהתחמה שמרחווה למידה, למידה אישית לחלקנים של הבנו. כראיה, בכל מחשה ו בכל עזרה, יודעים שאפשר לעצור, וכרן Shilu ליעדי ישראל, וקבל שם את העזרה.
I welcome the support of everyone who's willing to stand with us in this struggle as we rebuild the land of Israel, we rebuild the biblical heartland of Israel, and we do it through the children, through the next generation of Israel.
So, two things. One, please know that David has given much of himself to the Shilo Children's Fund. And I would ask that although you've all given donations already tonight that helped to pay for this room, if you have the means, please do stop by his table, make an additional donation if you can, or if you want to write a check and put it in the buckets, anything in the buckets from now through Friday night, we'll give to David. He's going to take a few questions, and he's got a long ride. He's gotta get upstate New York and head into Manhattan in the morning. So, we're probably gonna try to keep it to five or so questions. Please, if you have a question or comment, keep it brief and to the point. With that, bring up David. As always, raise your hand and we'll give you a microphone if you're gonna ask a question.
I actually, I have a question for you.
Okay, before you start, let me just clarify. In writing checks, just make sure that they are addressed to the Shilo Israel Children's Fund, not to me. And donations are US tax-duped.
So, in the past couple of days, Erdogan, who was the president or dictator now of Turkey, has called for the same thing, which is jihad, 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 and all the Muslims to go invade Israel. How do you feel that Israel will handle that? And do you think that there is gonna be a response?
Okay, well, I mean Erdogan has been talking like that not just this year. You know, he's been preaching there for a long time. We have to know who we're dealing with. So, he'll make speeches. Unfortunately, I don't think that Netanyahu is gonna do anything substantial about it. Make him a phone call and complain or something, send it, say something to the ambassador. But, look, I don't think that we're accomplishing anything by pretending that these Islamic extremists are our friends. The Islamic fundamentalists are our enemy. We have to understand that, and we have to act accordingly. Other questions?
David, this school that's starting, and I noticed you have a psychologist there to help the children get over this trauma. What kind of social studies programs do the children get so that they can deal in the future with living next door to people who want to kill them? It really bothers me that how are these children going to handle that? I can't even get my kids to believe there are people who are trying to kill us. How do you do it?
Yeah, well, look, this is something that the kids grow up with. And it's something that's discussed at home, and it's something that's discussed in school. The most important thing is for them to have a strong understanding of their heritage. This is something that, you know, the United States could learn from also. Very important to have a strong understanding of your heritage and why Israel is ours, and that it's a positive thing to be willing to sacrifice for a country. You know, we have this, ever since the Me generation, you know, had its influence, ever since the '60s really, but then the Me generation. Everything is just, you know, I want for me, and I want just what I can get from the society. And, you know, JFK's old, you know, what you can do for your country, not what your country can do for you. I mean, so, a lot of that needs to be re-taught again. So, in Israel, we teach it. Especially in the religious communities in Israel. We teach that very firmly, very strongly, and they also learn a lot of Bible, which is, you know, after all, our heritage. But you should know that that's also the heritage of the United States. At the first schools, the one-room schoolhouse, you know, they were teaching Bible. First chancellor of Harvard University was fluent in Hebrew because he wanted to know the Bible in the original. That's what they were teaching. And so, now, you know, it's almost like you can't teach Bible in Harvard, or Yale, or Columbia, forget about it. But that's something that can't, I don't, I say it is not irreversible. Don't let anyone tell you that it's irreversible. The clock can't be turned back on that, and Americans need to learn about their heritage too. And that's something that we do in Israel, and that's something that we work very hard at in our communities. And I have to tell you, not one of the families in Shilo that had a child killed in a terrorist attack has left. They're still there, they believe in it strongly, and the children are raised in these schools, and they're, you know, those who need it are treated in the therapy center. By the way, the therapy is formal therapy and informal therapy. And most of the children who are being treated informally, who are being given therapy informally, don't even realize it. That's a beautiful thing about it.
My name George Kalouf, background from Syria. First of all, congratulations for your son. I thank God he back to life, a normal life. My question-
By the way, my son is 18 years old now, and he just enlisted in the Israeli army two months ago.
I serve military police in the US Army too. And my question is, we hear your story about your lovely son. 1929, 1992, 13-years-old Palestinian boy on the CNN news was playing in rock area.
What was that? I didn't get that.
Rocky area, in a wood, playing in a wood. And he played in a wood, play in a wood, him and his sister, the CNN. And two Israeli soldiers, they talked to him, and he didn't listen. You know, I have nothing against you, nothing against anything. I live in America, beautiful country. I forgot about the Middle East. I'm here, my family here, my kids here, everything here. And I saw a CNN, and you come back to the arch. The two soldiers, they took the kid's hand, and they put it down, and they break it by rock. What do you think, Mr. David, about this poor story? I love to see peace between these two countries.
Okay. All right, well, first of all, first of all, we know that CNN is notorious for being fake news. I have seen, so, obviously, I don't know about that individual situation that you're referring to, but I do know that there are so many cases where the Arab countries will take videos, and they will do their Photoshop, and they will totally transform the video or the photos so that it's something that you're totally, it's totally different than what the situation is. So, I can only speak in general terms. I can't speak about that individual situation. I don't know what happened before also. I don't know who was throwing rocks at people's heads. You know, you saw the little baby in the video? The five-month-old baby, the builder's son? Okay, he was five months old. There were so-called Palestinian children on the side of the road. By the way, I call them so-called Palestinians because they only started calling themselves that in 1964, because it was a way of identifying as a people. And that way, they could say that they're the underdog, that the Israelis are oppressing them. So, the so-called Palestinians have made so many videos like that. And there's a famous one during, I think it was during one of the two Gaza wars. And they show this, this man huddled down with his son, dodging Israeli bullets. You may even know the video that I'm talking about, okay? And for weeks, it was shown on, in the Western media, what the Israelis are doing to this man and his poor little son, who he's trying to protect, to shield from those Israeli bullets. Well, about a half a year later, it came out, and it was proven that there were no Israelis there in the picture. That there were shooting, that it was a battle between two different Palestinian terrorist groups, and this man and his son got caught in between the two of them. That's one example. Another example, there's a picture that I saw on the internet, which shows, it shows a man with his face totally bloodied. And there is, it says in the caption, it was in New York Times, another fake news. It said in the New York Times, that the, it says Palestinian, Palestinian boy runs away from Israeli soldier who is attacking him. And you see the Israeli soldier standing with a big stick, and he looks very angry, and you see the boy crying with a bloody face. And it says, "On the Temple Mount." Okay, so, there's certain clues you have to look for here. First of all, if you look at the picture, you see that there's a gas station in the background. There is no gas station on the Temple Mount. Secondly, the so-called Israeli soldier, the so-called Israeli soldier was a policeman, Israeli policeman. And that boy was an American Jewish student who was in Israel for the year, who had had rocks thrown at him by Palestinian youth. Okay, who was supposed to feel sorry for? Who were throwing rocks at him. They attacked him with rocks, and they threw rocks at him, they hit him in the face. That's why his face was bloody. He's an American Jewish student, from New York, actually. So, it's very interesting. You know, I don't know if they got the photo from the Palestinian Authority or from some Palestine activist group or some leftist group, I don't know. But, Western, the Western world is flooded with fake media about Israel. And it's, they know exactly what they're doing.
Good feeling, is the story right? Good feeling.
It's not my feeling, it's what I've seen over and over and over and over again. That's the reality. And it's what I've experienced over and over and over again when it comes to the actual terrorism, which very often is carried out by underage teenagers. And the parents bless them, and they commit a terrorist attack. And if their children, so if their children, they're underage, after they commit a terrorist attack, then their family gets a financial reward from Mahmoud Abbas and the Palestinian Authority. And if they're older, and they go to jail, then they get an award and a salary from the Palestinian Authority. And this has been going on for years, since Yasser Arafat, Mahmoud Abbas made an official policy in the Palestinian Authority, and it's still going on today.
One more.
This is the last question.
Look, I have one question. The Israeli government, actually, during the Six-Day War, conquered the West Bank and the Temple Mount. Why did they not take it then? Why didn't they keep it? They had it all then, and- They had it all then and they more or less turned it back to the Palestinians.
Yeah, well, when the Six-Day War happened and Israel recaptured Jerusalem, recaptured all of Jerusalem, including the Temple Mount. The Israeli soldiers were up there and they were all in tears and they were blowing the shofar, the ram's horn. And the chief rabbi of Israel said, he said to the, he put up the Israeli flag on top of the mosque, the Big Dome of the Rock mosque. And he said, and he called up the chief of staff of the army. And he said, "Now is the opportunity, while we're still attacking, blow up the mosque and declare Israel sovereignty over the Temple Mount." The general, the general at the orders of the Defense Minister Moshe Dayan at that time, he told him, he told the chief rabbi, "You take down that flag from the Temple Mount. We don't want to create more, you know, we don't want to anger the Arab world, the Muslim world." And that's what happened. He handed over the keys to the Temple Mount, to the Jordanian wak, which was the Muslim authority in Jordan, which is on the other side of the Jordan River. And pretty much that's the way it's been ever since. Except that Jordan handed over to the, what they called the Palestinian wak. And that's who's in control of the Temple Mount right now. The Israeli police are allowed to be up there just to protect the visitors who come up there. But it's a bad situation, it's discrimination against Jews and Christians also, any non-Muslims within Israel, within the heart of Israel. With God's help, that'll be changed over time too. So I'd like to thank you for being with me here tonight. And well, what can I say? God bless Israel, God bless the United States of America, God bless all of you.
We have a quick announcement by Brian.
Good evening. I just want to, I put these on the tables, I've got a few extra if you need one. Next week, Thursday, the Markets for Prosperity is having a Lehigh Valley Politics and Issues Roundtable. Basically, it says we'll provide you with a clear understanding of the issues we are tackling here in Pennsylvania on the federal and state level. We welcome you to participate with your input on these key issues. So it's at the Borderline Restaurant. There's an email address and a phone number here to Eve, who's with the veterans group, ABAP also. So you can contact her and sign up. I think Tom, you're going to send out an email with us?
Yes.
So there'll be also a link with Eventbrite. Please come to this, it should be very interesting. I'll be there. Thanks, bye.
Hey Tom, right before you close, if anybody lives in the Bethlehem area school district, come talk to Mr. Gallagher here because he's running for school board. And don't forget, primaries this Tuesday, you need to be out voting.
Next month, that's June 1st, here in this room, we will have Robert Begley. He's going to be speaking with us about heroes, Pennsylvania heroes, individual rights. And his associate professor, Biondi, will review Trump's first 100 days, taking a look at what individual rights we may have regained since then. With that, I will say thank you, safe travels home. Please stop at David's table, pick up a book or two. And I thank you all for coming. God bless America. Yes, no problem. Thanks, Brian. You can leave these connected to this. Water ran gets disconnected, but leave those attached. Yes, yes. Over the weekend, blogs- It gets posted to YouTube, actually. So the only thing I can tell you is that YouTube can be very, very- Right, but you can go to a website called kibz, k-i-n-t-e-r, 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 and you can stop there. And put in the terrorist address, and you can, and you say download. And then it'll give you a list of what size, you know, what package or file size. And you can just click, and you see. But it's really, really, it's two hours of video.